Order. Um, Councilor McDonald is under the weather, so she won't be joining us tonight, so we hope that she feels better. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will call the agenda approved and move on to announcements. Um, just see in your package, there's a couple of proclamations, the Canadian School Counseling Week, which is February 5th to 9th, and Kinsman and Canets Day Week, which is February 18th to 25th, and the day is February 24th. And I signed those proclamations, um, a couple of weeks ago, so we're kind of changing it up.
Yep.
To not read through all those, but we did, uh, sign those and declare those that way. Uh, council announcements, Councilor Graves and Councilor Fergier.
Yeah.
Hi. Thank you. Um, on behalf of Michael Graves and myself and the Christmas on La Havre Committee, we would both like to thank you for your time and tremendous support, as together we hosted the 13th Annual Whimsical Children's Christmas Store at the Michelin Social Club on Saturday, December 2nd. Because of you, it was another great event. All proceeds from the Whimsical Children's Store sales are donated to the ARC on King Street. This year, the ARC will be receiving, or we did receive, a check for $1,763.95. In addition, we ask that a donation be given to the Food Bank as the price of admission. This year, the Food Bank received approximately $750, 600 in food and 153.75 in cash.
Yes, and in order to make that happen, it takes an awful lot of people. We kind of blew the budget this year. It cost us, uh, $63 to run the Whimsical Children's Christmas Store, and probably in the 13 years that we've been doing it, it's about $2,000. But the reason that happens is because of the people that support the Whimsical Children's Store. So what we, what I would like to do is just thank some of those people, and certainly the first group would be the Parkview Stepkids, or the Step Program at Parkview Education Center. These are the people that designed the store, they make the store, they build the store, and then they tear that store down. Uh, without them, you really couldn't do it. There's about 20, 25 volunteers, student, uh, student volunteers at that group. But there's also the business community. The ARC collects, uh, the items for us, access self-storage, stores the Whimsical Children's Store every year for a one-day event. We get a free rent for a year for a one-day event. The Michelin Social Club, for 10 years, has been donating all the space to us. Bridgewater Mall, Eastside Plaza, provide us with free storage. The Chronicle Herald and South Shore Breaker provides us with free advertising. The Christmas on La Havre Committee, uh, provides us with support as well. There's also the volunteers. Uh, there's a woman named Connie Banfield, she's a, an instructor at Michelin Social Club. Uh, she teaches a seniors class, and from that group, we get about 30, 30 volunteers. These are seniors that help, um, merchandise the product, they help price the product, and without them, we really would be, you know, hamstrung. Uh, this year, we also, every year, we get the YMCA Youth Leaders, as well as Darren Young from Fresh Cuts Meats, uh, helps us move the equipment from our storage unit at the mall to the Michelin Social Club. A gentleman named Sterling Ray, Rick and Brian, and Sterling Ray is a great volunteer for the town of Bridgewater. Uh, he's also a scout leader. Uh, they do some of the, uh, the building, help the students with some of the more technical building. Uh, South Shore Eye Center is a, is a group that sent in 15 volunteers this year that helped the children shop and wrap presents. Schools plus meet-a-wee and all those individuals that, uh, that donate product to the Whimsical Children's Christmas Store. Uh, for those people that don't know what the Whimsical Children's Christmas Store is, it's a corporate, it's a non-corporate store where kids can shop, uh, with the help of a volunteer for Christmas presents for their parents and loved ones. Uh, so the idea is, come Christmas morning, the children are giving a present to a loved one who has no idea what that present is, so you kind of create this energy of this, which is really great. So I, just on behalf of Cheryl and I, and, and the Christmas on La Havre Committee, thanks for all the support to the community, and we hope to be doing this again, uh, next year. Great.
Thank you. Thank you to the two of you as well for your hard work on that.
Yeah.
That's great. Any other announcements from council? I'll just say that, uh, yesterday, the community had the opportunity to pay respects to, uh, the Ritzy family on the passing of former Councilor Greg Ritzy. Um, and, uh, it is certainly, uh, we continue to pass on our condolences to his family. He was a, a avid volunteer in the community, especially Canada Day, Christmas on La Havre, and of course, the museum. Um, so he, uh, he will be missed in the community, and everyone would have saw, seen him walking around. He was, he was constantly out in public, so he'll be missed by many people in the community. So again, we are condolences to the Ritzy family on his, uh, on his passing. Um, our next item is really our, uh, our delegation. We have a number of people here, uh, in support of Catherine, David Wright. Um, so we have Christina Andrews and the Monday Writers Group, am I have that correct?
Yes, thank you.
And so, um, welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, this is two, uh, do we call you your honor, Mayor David Mitchell and the Bridgewater Council? So we are the Monday Writers Group and Concerned Citizens of Bridgewater. We are requesting a letter of support for our town of Bridge, from our town of Bridgewater to the Canadian Government, asking for Catherine and David Wright, who are here tonight, 75-year-old seniors, to be allowed to stay in their home and community of Voglers Cove, Nova Scotia, as requested in their impending compassionate grounds appeal. Most of us here met Kat and then David through Kat's active participation in writers groups in Bridgewater and the South Shore of Nova Scotia. We are grateful for the opportunity to introduce them to council and anxious to speak for them in their urgent situation. We know them to be exceptionally kind, helpful, artistic, community-oriented people who bring a broad range of skills and abilities. They are financially responsible and continue to do contracted work in technical design and editing. They have volunteered, supported, and helped develop various programs for the fire department, the schools, and the community center. Kat is the founder of the Read and Share Corner, a free library at the Voglers Cove Community Hall, where she has facilitated author reads night, whereby well-known authors from across Nova Scotia have shared their writing and talked about the writing process. These events provide a venue for residents and our own accomplished authors in Lunenburg County. In Bridgewater, Kat has been involved for several years in writing groups at the Margaret Henninger Library and in the general community. She has assisted local prospective writers through her professional editorial skills by providing sound feedback and encouragement. Kat has bridged the gap between Voglers Cove and the surrounding communities by spreading her love of reading and writing to all age groups, from kindergarten kids to the elderly. David is a founding member of the United Committee's Fire Department, which was founded in 1973 after a major forest fire in the area. He has been involved with all aspects of the volunteer fire department, including fundraising. David is also a great neighbor, a wonderful guitar picker, and an experienced technical designer who helps people with business and personal projects. Like many good folks seeking a better life, the rights came by choice to Canada from the United States almost 50 years ago. The government of Canada welcomed them as landed immigrants. David established himself as a fisherman, but he was badly defeated and tossed back by the sea. Three years in a row, between 1974 and 1977, David lost all his fishing gear to massive storms and did not have the resources to replace his losses. They sadly retreated to the USA to better support themselves and work toward the day they could come home to their beloved community. Eventually, they returned, becoming self-sufficient, tax-paying, income-earning, Nova Scotian homeowners. In their struggle to return to Voglers Cove, Kat and David found they had made an unwitting error that invalidated their landed immigrant status. Since their only intention has always been to become Canadians, to become, sorry, to become citizens of Canada, they appealed to the Government of Canada Immigration Appeal Division, IAD, and were granted permanent resident status. The government took that positive IAD decision to the federal court, and their permanent resident status was denied by the second IAD hearing. They are now appealing that denial. Considering that rural Nova Scotia is struggling to attract qualified migrants, the rights have proven themselves as a welcome addition to our collective population. At the 11th hour in their dilemma, individuals and municipalities like Modal and Shelburne are giving wholehearted written support to the rights to ensure their right to live out the remaining years in the home of their hearts. They have patiently survived a 50-year quest, which most of us can't imagine, just to live and love here by the sea. Theirs is an unquestionable right to dwell among the only family they know, all the folks who are enriched by and see their true worth. We cannot see any benefit from spending more time, energy, funds, and grief on routing out elder folks approaching their 75th birthdays, who are a natural resource to everyone who knows them. If we put ourselves in the right shoes for one moment, we can completely understand the horror of their current predicament. They are faced with possible permanent expulsion from Canada. If they were evicted from their long-term home, there is no safety net, no extended family or rescue shelter to catch them on the other side. They belong here as we do. In conclusion, we find this couple to be personally and professionally valuable to the fabric of our community. They are highly qualified, well-integrated, low-maintenance, fully-functioning citizens of Canada, whose practice is to give with open hands and to leave things better than they found them. We request that the town of Bridgewater grant a letter of support to the Government of Canada for Catherine and David Wright, to ensure the peace of mind they have not had for years and the right to remain in their own Canadian home. Thank you. This is respectfully signed by myself, Chris Andrews. Frank Van Ben. Frank, could you put your hand up, please? Okay. Frances McGushen. Karen Powell. And Jackie Westhaver. And we're all residents of Bridgewater.
Thank you. Questions from members of council?
Just how long were you in, um, Canada? Of the 75 years? How long, how much time was spent in Canada? Just curious.
Are we allowed to answer?
Just to answer the question.
Yeah. Yeah, you can answer.
Sure. We lived in Voglers Cove from 1972 to 1977.
Mm-hmm.
Then we left because we had no money. We were absolutely flat. And when they went to another, David found work, um, which he was not able to find in Canada. This, this is a long answer to your question.
Mm-hmm.
We came, finally, we were able to come back to Canada in 2012, so we have been here for six years.
Okay.
In Voglers Cove again.
Okay. Good.
So essentially, two periods of six years.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve years total.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. Other questions from Councilor Thorburn?
I believe you said the, the application was approved at one level, and then went to a second appeal and was denied, and I was wondering, if it was already approved, why the denial at the second level?
Why the denial? Do you, do you really, may I have?
Yes, absolutely.
No, just a few.
Do you want to come up to the, to the microphone?
I, I can talk loud.
All right.
Do you want to come, Catherine?
It's, it's really a question for our attorney to answer. Um, I, I can't tell you really what the thinking was from the Immigration Appeal Division.
That, that's a good answer. I just felt I had asked a question, because I didn't, once it was approved, I thought it would have automatically then just kicked in and you'd been given your rights to stay here.
It was the previous federal government that didn't like the decision, and they took it to federal court. And the federal court said, they didn't, federal court did not have, uh, could not rule on the decision, they just said, "You have to go back and have another hearing before IAD." And it was the second hearing that our, um, permanent resident status was denied. Although, the, um, the tribunal did, said everything that they could, that we would be good citizens, that we were good people and should be welcomed in Canada, but he didn't have the authority to do that. That, that's my short version. I, the lawyer, our lawyer might have more to say about it.
No. Thank you.
Their lawyer, Lee Cohen, is available, he said he's available to address counsel in, in any, through email or telephone or whatever you like, if you need more information, as he did with Modal, I think.
That's he did with Modal.
So, the, my understanding is the town of Shelburne and municipality district of Lunenburg have written letters in, of support.
Yes.
For this.
I think it was an internal initiative from Modal, it came from inside Modal, and Shelburne was done by also, yeah, thank you.
So traditionally, we don't, uh, the nights that we actually receive a presentation like this, we don't make the decision tonight, because we have to go back and kind of digest it, um, give us time to gather more information. Does, does any members of council have any more questions? Councilor Fergier?
Just to further to, uh, Worship's comment about, uh, council's time to, uh, take the information, what kind of time window? I know you're, uh, here tonight and stressing some urgency and making, um, our requi, your request to us, so I'm just wondering, you've got a deadline to meet as far as a future date?
They're under humanitarian grounds, uh, process right now, but they're also under a deportation order, so it's very, we're not really, yeah.
Because it's about deportation.
Okay, sorry. Removal, sorry, bad word. Yeah. Yeah. So I don't think anybody really knows the right answer. There, there is a process in place.
Okay.
That's also something that our lawyer, Lee Cohen, could answer for you. Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is your council attorney, is that J.C. Redding?
Yes.
He's also the council attorney for Modal, and he has already had this conversation with Lee Cohen.
Yeah, and I believe.
There's a resource for him.
Yeah, I believe we have a copy of documents.
In your attachments, yeah.
Yeah, from J.C.
Yeah.
Any further questions from council? Okay.
Jackie?
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to come up? I'll just, yeah, if there's anyone else who wants to speak. We normally have time for other delegations, so we'll just stack you all and call you other delegations.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Um, to the best of my knowledge, the only thing I've ever been told in all of this going on, um, as a, perhaps a reason, or for the change of mind or whatever, was, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, was because you were out of the country longer. And they were coming, I believe, summers, vacation, you were coming through summer vacations and things as well, correct?
I, I don't, I didn't hear you just.
Okay, sorry.
Were you visiting back and forth during that? Oh, yes, we did. Yeah.
Yeah, so they, they didn't disappear, disappear, they were just wanting to come back, but couldn't come back. And, um, the, the technicality, the problem was that they had been gone longer than the stated amount of time. There wasn't a big kerfuffle or anything that I'm aware of. That's my understanding, so I don't know if that's helpful or not, but anyway, thank you. Anybody else?
Does anyone else want to make a statement? No? Um, so council does have information in their package.
Yep.
And we already have letters of support from Shelburne and MODL, and I know I just, just said traditionally, we don't make decisions, uh, on the same night, but there is a little bit of urgency on this, and it is just a letter of support that we are offering. Does council wish to make that decision tonight and draft a letter of support, um, based on the one from Shelburne and MODL, or do you wish to wait and discuss this further?
I think we should move now.
I think we should move now.
I'd make that motion.
And I will second it.
Okay, so, Councilor McGinnis?
Give a letter of support.
That we, uh, draft a letter of support based on the one from Shelburne and MODL, seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Any further discussion? Questions? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. Uh, are there any other delegations on any other topics tonight? No? All right, no correspondence for information or action. Our first item is, uh, building permit report for December. You guys don't have to sit through the whole meeting if you don't want to. I mean, you're more than welcome to, it's so, it's very exciting. Um, you have your building report for December, 2017. Town engineer is not with us this evening, but if you have any questions, of course, you can, um, contact Mr. Feener. Looked like a good year.
Yep.
So a trend that we hope to continue, see an increase again in some building permits for 2018.
Mm-hmm.
So, the town continues to defy the odds, I would say.
Well, as I keep reminding, and we should, we should brag about this, not many towns in the province of Nova Scotia, or indeed Atlantic Canada of our size, have this kind of growth year in and year out. And, uh, you know, my eyes lined up right, that's $13.8 million from building permits this past year, from January to December 31st. That's a substantial growth for a town our size.
Yes, it is. Yeah. Now, there's a lot of activity in town, we should be very proud, and, and like I said, hopefully continue to work on the same trajectory. Uh, next item is recommendation of CAO, Solid Waste Collection Contract Extension, so our contract, uh, ends next year, March next year, I think.
March.
Um, and there's some work to be done before we, uh, we do much, uh, in terms of negotiating that, so extending the contract for a year was a recommendation. Did you want to add to that?
Sure. So all the partners, uh, all the municipal units in Lunenburg County have met with the Municipal Joint Services Board staff, discussed some possible approaches to ensure we have a very competitive solicitation for collection of solid waste. After doing some very quick, early work, we realized that, um, equipment, fleet equipment for a contract has an over one-year, uh, lead time on it as well. We have some opportunities, we think, to make a more competitive solicitation, so it's been recommended to all the municipal units to, uh, request a extension to the current contract to enable us to continue that process.
Great. Any questions on that?
No.
It's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward, yeah.
Uh, and all the municipal units, we hope are going to.
Yes.
Make the same request. Um, is someone prepared to make a motion?
Yeah.
Councilor Graves?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and authorized staff to request a one-year contract extension to the solid waste collection contract as outlined in Document 18-005.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. You put your hand up, so, would you like to second the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I want to ask a question.
All right. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Should, should that be stated as conditional upon existing pricing?
I believe that.
That's it, that's as per the, um, the, um, report that's covered there.
Okay.
Existing pricing.
All right, perfect. Good question, though. Any other questions?
So that will be subject to, obviously, the other, our municipal partners have agreed, or they're in the process of bringing this to their council, are they?
That's right.
Yeah, as far as we understand, we're, we're all on the same page right now.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so far so good. Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, recommendation of senior management committee, mobile device policy. Um, did you want to speak to this one?
This, this is fairly bland administrative policy, however, it gives, uh, which we required council's approval for. The policy gives some rigor around who gets a smartphone or cell phone with regards to the municipality. It mostly reflects the fact that through the Municipal Joint Services Board, we have a very commercially competitive, um, contract, and we'll be moving away from where people will be expensing from their own contracts to moving people towards the, um, the municipal contract. So, uh, it, uh, it just enables us to do that.
Yeah, that's good. Questions on that? I imagine something's coming.
Yeah, I, I think it's very good, but my question is, we have a two-way radio system as well, in Public Works especially, and is that required in this day and age?
Through the mayor to council, we do have a two-way system. I don't know the details on it at this point. I can get some follow-up detail on why that is or isn't needed.
I mean, I just, I'm just curious.
I'll find it.
Okay. Councilor Thorburn?
We do have a VHS system, uh, and base sets in the town hall, the truck, to the town trucks and the water utility vehicles, but if they all have cell phones, I bought that up a couple of years ago, I don't, it's pretty much redundant, and, uh, I, I think the cost of registration, uh, is substantial for that Trump mobile, mobile system, if we're not using it. If we're using it, fine, but we should check that out.
It's worth looking into. I mean, we did lose cellphone service last year, but that's the first time I've ever, like, that I can remember, we had, remember we had that outage across Atlantic Canada, but I don't, I can't remember any other time where that happened, but it's worth looking into, because it would be something that we'd have to register and license, right?
Yeah, license.
But it might be a reason for it.
Yep.
So if you could bring that back. Um, so, I think you already answered the question that I have, which is, we have a policy in place that determines who gets a phone and who doesn't get a phone?
Well, this sets the parameters around why you would get a phone.
Okay.
Common sense, and puts the responsibility on supervisors to make that. We need to manage our cellphone usage, and there's certainly, there's phones out there where people entered personal contracts a couple of years ago or built. We need to wait until their contracts expire before we merge and migrate them, but this gives us that direction to properly manage our, um, corporate cell phones.
Okay. Any other questions? Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor, please? Councilor Fergier?
I make a motion, Your Worship, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the mobile device, um, police?
Policy.
Oh, it's supposed to be policy, yes. Uh, mobile device policy as presented in Document 18-007, and that be added as per policy 10.9 of the town's personnel policy and procedures manual.
Seconder, seconded by Councilor Thorburn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Now we get into the exciting stuff. No pressure, but, um, so the first is the recommendation of CAO, the Economic Development Action Plan. Once we get our technology up and running.
Um, this evening, I'm presenting you on two items briefly, our proposed Economic Development Action Plan, and a measurement system to report on our community priorities. And actually, if Jessica wants to come down, just, uh, instead of just being, uh, if, we have some questions, I've worked with planning on this, I've actually, the, the development of all of this work was done with all the staff, and with the entire management team. So, the proposed Economic Development Action Plan is a focused direction based on the approved work of Town Council, particularly the downtown and waterfront master plan, and the recently approved community energy investment plan, as well as council's priorities. As we've gone through these, this work, uh, we're recommending, and we see a clear vision, that Bridgewater is the place to be innovative, creative, and thrive. The Economic Development Action Plan will follow this vision. The overarching theme of the Town of Bridgewater Economic Development Action Plan is that it focuses on people. The plan aims to provide direction on creating the quality of place and experience in our community that benefits current and future residents and businesses, and enables them to thrive. Over the next few years, three priority outcomes will direct the success of the town. First is that King Street is a vibrant and thriving place. Secondly, energy opportunities will drive community prosperity. And the third priority outcome is our people, both businesses and residents, enjoy high levels of community wellbeing. So we've developed this table of actions that will guide us through the next few years, but these are tangible things that we can get, get at and get doing. Actions in this table show policy activities, project-based activities, or programming activities, under those three priority outcomes. Actions under the King Street is a vibrant, thriving place. Actions under the King Street is a vibrant, thriving place include bringing in a bylaw that enables reduction in the property taxes payable on the redevelopment of buildings in the commercial district, a public art policy and investments, planning efforts to focus commercial growth to the core and increase residents in the area, renewal of our parcade, and ongoing streetscaping investments, signage, engagement with our downtown planning advisory committee, um, and reexamining opportunities around capacity building and reexamining the, the past work around the business improvement district. Also looking at land assembly opportunities are some examples. Our recently approved Community Energy Investment Plan sets us on a bold path to sustainable future in Bridgewater. These energy opportunities will drive community prosperity. Measures, measures such as increasing our property-assessed clean energy program, incenting more energy efficiency, continuing with municipal energy projects while continuing to develop community ones, and taking advantage of the recently announced Smart Cities Challenge. The Smart Cities Challenge was announced in November and staff are working on a report that we're going to bring to council on an approach that we believe will position the town of Bridgewater to compete in this $5 million contest. Our Community Energy Plan positions us for this very well. Other wellbeing measures include public transit, accessibility, trails development, open space planning and projects, and affordable housing. Our plan is focused on making sure that our people enjoy high levels of community wellbeing. Measures on this outcome will include the development of a town technology plan, which can drive community engagement, innovation, creativity, commerce, and personal quality of life. Bridgewater is a place that has embraced technology. Having Wi-Fi provided in our King Street was, was in our downtown plan. We've created a joint information technology service at the Municipal Joint Services Board. A Bridgewater technology strategy will include things such as open data, improved online engagement, and leading digital strategies to complement town services, which can assist with the development of priorities and actions to accelerate all of these objectives of community betterment. Bridgewater is truly a world-class community that people are learning from. We are going to be able to continue to leverage our efforts for the betterment of our people in this plan. Finally, it's important to have a tool to measure our success objectively. Simply, we want to show how awesome Bridgewater is. The Awesome Bridgewater Index will bring together data to measure and report on progress on the three priority outcomes of the Economic Development Action Plan. This index will be developed based on available and relevant data for the town. A preliminary overview of the index may include data on the, this table that I'm showing. Coincidentally, luckily, and thanks to the network of people that Jessica and Leon have created, we've been approached by the International Institute for Sustainable Development that have been funded for a project to develop a community indicator system. Community Indicator System measures the important aspects of community social, economic, environmental, political, cultural, and physical wellbeing. By tracking past and current information on these indicators, this can provide insight into the overall health and direction of community. Community indicators are bits of information that, when combined, generate a picture of what's happening in our local system. These are based on the recognition that in order to understand and improve community wellbeing and sustainability, these elements must be managed for. However, communities can't manage what they do not measure. So, this system will provide a means to quantify and measure aspects affecting Bridgewater's wellbeing and sustainability and will enable Bridgewater to identify challenges and priorities for action and monitor policy. So, the Economic Action Plan will become a priority of council. Progress will be, uh, reported on a quarterly basis with the council priority reported. And the annual Awesome Bridgewater Index will provide a regular measurement tool to demonstrate success. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? That was awesome.
Yeah.
CAO and I battle it out, because we both like the word awesome. So, only one of us can have that.
It's yours.
No, I wish you wouldn't give up, so we, that was great. Any, no questions?
No, it's great.
It's pretty, oh, Councillor Graves?
So, this is in regards to the Awesome Bridgewater Index. So, the International Institute for Sustainable Development has created an index, but is this, is this a public document? Will we be using it to compare ourselves against other communities? Or is it more of an internal?
It's my understanding that each of the communities that the International Institute of Sustainable Development is working with on this project will each develop their own community index. There will probably be a number of indices that will be common to communities involved in the project, but each overall index will be unique to those communities.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the full doc, I know that, um, my computer froze on me, so I can't look at the documentation that was sent, um, but that basically was a menu
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of potential indices that we could choose from to create our own Awesome Bridgewater Index. So, that was just an example of the types of things that we can use to measure different aspects of our community.
Okay, because there's, there's other indexes, like the genuine, uh, genuine progress indicator. There's the one Nova Scotia Dashboard, which is NSCC, the, the Canadian Index of Wellbeing. So, how does this one differ from any of those, or?
It will, so it's based on, it will be looking at that information. So, the, so the GPI Atlantic, like, i- it has a high overlap of what this is going to do. The key is that it's sustainable and repeatable, so that we're able to get that data on a regular basis and measurement, measure it, so that, um, it's something that can sustain itself, that, um, uh, it won't be a one-time effort. Communities have struggled with developing repeatable indexes. Um, and, um, uh, so this, this initiative, which, um, the International Institute of Sustainable Development, they've received grant funding through the Echo Foundation to work with select communities on this. Um, and, you know, we, my presumption is that it will unfold as we expect it to. However, we, we will be committed to doing an index that measures on the, um, outcomes of our Economic Development Action Plan. So, um, it should be a great learning experience for the town and a good opportunity to compare us with other, uh, progressive communities across Canada.
Okay, that's, no, that's good.
Okay. For me, I like that there's some teeth into the plans we've done.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Councillor McGinnis is going to test the number of plans we've done over the last however many years you've been here, uh, 18 or 19 years, um, where the plan has just kind of sat on the shelf. And so, I like that now there's some, some teeth to that and it's going to start to ratchet forward, so I like that. Someone prepared to make a motion on the first one, which is the Economic Development Action Plan? Councillor Frasier?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll make a motion that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the CAO and approve the Economic Development Action Plan for 2018 to 2020 as contained in Document 17-164A.
Is there a seconder? Councillor McGinnis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And on the second item, the, uh, Awesome Bridgewater Index. Any discussion on that?
Awesome.
Someone prepared to make a motion for that? Councillor Thurber?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the mandarandam of understanding in Document 18-00 regarding the development of a community indicator system with the International Institute of Sustainable Development.
Seconder, please. Councillor Frasier. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Forward to where this goes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next item is recommendation Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, uh, from the, uh, in terms of a appointee, advisory committee appointee. Um, is someone prepared to make a motion on that?
Yes, Your Worship, I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture and appoint Ken Smith to serve on the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Advisory Committee for a term effective immediately and expiring October 31st, 2020.
Is there a seconder? Councillor Graves? Any discussion?
Great gallant ears.
Yes, that is.
Yep.
Uh, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Down to business, rising unfinished business. Um, we had a request for financial assistance from the Bridgewater Baseball Association for their scoreboard, and they were, uh, asked to submit some financials, which they have complied with and sent those in. And I don't know if anyone has any questions, because it's...
It's also been provided to the Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee, and you were expecting something back?
Right, which we don't have. And their meeting that is normally scheduled for tomorrow is scheduled for the 30th, so that won't come back to, uh, to council until our February meeting. So, are there any questions that we can take now, uh, and give to our Director of Finance through the CAO? Or do we have enough information? We'll just wait for the recommendation from PRNC? Um, do you want to refer this to the budget deliberations? What is the wish?
If I may, Your Worship, would that not go to grants organizations?
Yeah, that would be my question.
It did originally come from us, did it not? I could be wrong.
I don't remember.
Maybe it didn't. Okay.
Should it not?
Well, we can refer it to that committee.
I thought it did, was there at one point in time, but it didn't give us a budget and it was withdrawn or something. But that might have been a year or two ago, so. But that's probably where it should go. It is a grant.
Well, it certainly could be referred to that committee.
Yep.
That is a bill of council. Someone want to make a motion to refer that and the recommendation that comes to PRNC, I guess, will be forwarded to the Grants Committee? Or do you want to wait until that comes?
Also, just in regards to the sign, the, um, the football sign has got a sponsor. Is there no way they can find sponsorship for the, um, for the sign?
I'm sure they could.
Yeah. They, I think that's what they should be looking at. Instead of coming to us, I think they should be going to the community first.
We did do some in-kind for the football as well.
Yep.
Um, we didn't pay for the sign, but we did some in-kind work to put it in.
Yeah. I haven't got a problem with that.
I don't recall, were they asking for us to buy the sign 100% or just give a donation towards the sign?
The amount is $933 or something. I can't imagine it's for the whole sign.
No.
I feel like we're missing a piece of information, which is the recommendation from the Director of PRNC.
I guess the question I have, who is going to eventually own the sign? Will it be the town of Bridgewater or will it be the Bridgewater Minor Baseball Association?
There's a good question.
Does that determine who should approve this?
So, why don't we, why don't we get our questions out and collect the answers to those while we wait for the information from PRNC and then we can
Yes.
Deal with this in February. So, we have one question, which is, who will own the sign? Councillor Thurber?
And who's going to maintain the sign going forward?
Okay, who's going to maintain the sign?
The total cost? Have they looked at other ways of funding sponsorship? We don't know the total cost of the sign, we just...
No, we can find out what the total cost of the sign is. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Well, I mean, the financials indicate they do have money in the bank. There are a couple line items, I guess, in the financials that struck me as odd, like a CRA payment. Like, I don't understand why a nonprofit would be paying CRA anything, honestly. Um, so, I don't know, maybe they need some help from us a bit on managing a nonprofit a bit, I don't know.
We can ask that question.
Don would know those kinds of answers.
Yeah.
Probably quickly.
Councillor Thurber?
Yeah, I did notice in there too, that their float is in there as an expense, but that's really cash, that's, as an asset, tangible asset. And maybe it shouldn't be listed as an expense, just...
Hmm. Any other questions?
That should be enough.
That's enough questions. So, um, we'll hold this over to our next regularly scheduled council meeting?
Yes, that's after PRC.
Sure. Yeah. I think it's after PRC. Yes, okay. Sorry, because we moved that meeting, so I'm all confused. Any other questions? All right, so that'll come back in the next agenda. Uh, pre-budget direction, external agencies, department and departments and commissions. Uh, Mr. McClellan, did you want to speak to this one?
Sure. So, work on the 2018-19 budget is well underway. Um, in fact, I expect to be receiving the first revision of the capital budget, um, the day after tomorrow. Uh, we, we did receive our preliminary assessment revenue numbers in December. Uh, we do know that with, particularly with our parking levy, um, um, being rescinded this year, that our revenue is down. Um, some of our non-discretionary items are up, so we are working from, um, from a financial challenge this year. Um, so what we're looking to do here is make sure that the external boards and departments that we provide funding for understand the financial situation that we're working from so that they can start working on their budget. Um, to give you a sense, approximately 40% of our budget is developed outside of, um, of town departments. So, whether that's provincial transfers or through departments or, um, like police, fire, uh, the LCLC, uh, those would be outside of our, our, our organization. So, we're looking to, through this report, give some preliminary pre-budget financial direction to those external boards, uh, commissions and committees, um, of where to work for, for budget 2018-19.
Okay. Questions to CAO? Someone want to put a motion on the floor and then we can ask questions?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Councillor Frasier.
That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater provide the early financial direction as per Document 17-201A for the consideration by external boards, departments, and commissions in the development of their annual budget and business plans.
Seconder. Deputy Mayor Tanner? So, just for clarity, for those who, because I heard a couple people say they don't understand the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I believe it is, is the ones that are listed in there, for example, are ones that we don't, as a council, don't have a say in their budget. We only give them money.
Yeah.
So, what the CAO is recommending is that we go early to those external bodies and say, this is the money that
We're giving you.
This is the ceiling that we're bumping into. Is that
Correct.
Kind of summarizes it?
Through the mayor to, to council and the table provided, for example, uh, the proposed direction for Bridgewater Police, uh, a lift of just over $75,000 from last year to $3.8 million. We're recommending that the fire department work towards a flat, a flat budget, um, um, and same with the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center, uh, looking for them to, uh, find capacity so that we can also fund the ask from HB Studios towards their capital amount. So, um, we're looking at, um, trying to maintain that external envelope as much as we can as we work through our early days on the budget.
Questions from Councillor Frasier?
Um, I have a question. When I look at, uh, the expenses by cost center in the pie chart, um, using policing as an example, um, which is 21.2% of our budget, um, and the figure there, should it correspond with what's down in the chart below for the proposed budget? I'm just, I don't understand why they're different numbers.
They're different.
Yeah.
And I see that there. I'm assuming that there's capital included in the 4.1 million, um, because the operating envelope is the 3.7. So, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the reason for the difference.
I think, I think that chart, that's the one from, from our budget document.
Yeah.
At the front. at the front. I think that's the total department budget, because I'm looking at Fire, and that obviously includes the protection rate as well in that chart. It's, our Fire Department doesn't get 1.3 million.
That's right.
So, yeah, because policing is over $4 million. We know that, but it must include...
Is there other funding pieces in that? From, some of our police are paid from the province?
Yeah, so you've got, you've got your boots on the streets.
Yeah.
So, that's in in and out. That shows up in that four, but not in the 3.8.
Okay.
I'm just showing the, the town, the town, sorry, the town expense, yes.
Councilor McGinnis?
I, I hate to bring this up, but I will. Museum commission, we're looking at $75,000. There's nothing in there for transition costs for staff in cases needed. Is that going to be our responsibility, or is that... We just going to say $75,000, that's it? I know last year we put money in for transition for, for staff, and it was used for other things, obviously. I'm just wondering what's going to happen this year?
Well, I would, I would make the assumption that it depends on what the museum does. So, if the museum is able to find other sources of revenue and maintain their staffing levels, then transition funding wouldn't be needed. But at the end of the day, even though we don't control the museum budget, they are our staff. So, if there was, if there was transition funding needed, we would have to give that funding. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McClellan, but they are our employees, so we're obligated to them.
Correct. Obviously, this has been a file that council's worked through, and last year's budget line item of $116,000 was provided. The way it was broken down, as I understand, was $75,000 for the annual grant, $41,000 for the transition funding. The decision of the commission was to not change the staffing model. However, as the mayor indicated, if there is a severance or, or, or something, that is something that the town is going to be responsible to make sure that it's dealt with. So, I guess I can't give you a clean answer on that because we don't know exactly what the commission intends to do.
I guess my next question would be that very question. When would we know that? Would we know about the time the budget is approved, I'm hoping?
Well, they would present their budget to us before we deal with our budget, so we would know that ahead of time, I would think. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
One thing I'm noticing and certainly have noticed during my time here is that we always ask most departments, and specifically in this case, everyone's holding a line in or reducing their budget except for the Bridgewater Police Department. So, I would ask why we can't ask, task them, I guess, with a, to accommodate a 5% to 10% budget drop and see where that comes from, and give us, then to give us feedback on where that comes from. And one example is, you know, I see the RCMP driving along the highways in very, very old cruisers, and yet our police service seems to be driving relatively new vehicles on a regular basis. And I realize there's a difference between town and highway driving, but at the same time, I just wonder if there's some extensions, I guess, that could be made to reduce that budget a bit.
Through the mayor to council, if it's the will of council, we can ask commission to provide counsel with that, that level of options and implications of what a 5% or 10% budget envelope reduction would do, and if there are any options for this. As I developed the 3.8, it's simply their comp lift from their union contract.
But it's a fair point to ask, and we can, we can pass that along to the commission, and they can come back with what it would look like, and...
Yeah.
We, we do know we have challenges like everyone else with policing, that the majority of our cost is salary-based. It's based on a negotiated contract. We also know that we have the complement of officers that are paid for through other programs, and that a reduction in staffing is not that easy, because for every staff member that you reduce there, you then lose your provincially funded, so you actually have to reduce four, three, to actually see savings of one. So, it does create challenges, but it's an exercise that can be gone through for sure.
I think the public would appreciate it.
Yeah, well, okay, sure. We'll pass that.
I, I know the, with regards to the policing, they provide a budget to council. As far as, I understand that their building is leased, and with regard to, there's different increments with maybe a increase in the lease payments. Is there, I think I understand we're not quite halfway through, so there's no room to negotiate anything there as far as the cost, the overhead cost for the building is. Do they provide that detail when, when they give a budget to us?
I'm just trying to think back how we have seen it, presented the budget. I mean, the numbers, all those numbers are, can be provided.
Yeah.
Right? So, you can have the level of detail that you, you want, for sure. Yeah, so while we don't debate the line items, we absolutely have access to them, and to, you know, Deputy Mayor's question that he just asked, if, if it's a question that you'd like the commission to, to have answer for you, in terms of the lease of the building, we can certainly find out.
I think that would be valuable, and knowing, you know, if, what the increments are, if, if every five years the lease payment goes up, what the, what the details are with the contract, I guess.
Yeah, we can find that. I think we had that last year, we might have had that.
In regards to the field house, it's still the $30,000 ask that Mr. Smith made back on January 8. And I'm just wondering, Councilor Frasier had mentioned something about, you know, redoing the mortgage in a, in a, in a different way, or possibly us lending them money through, at a preferred rate, the town rate? There's also, you know, the opportunity, I think they spend about $30,000 a year on insurance, and is there a way that we can somehow tie it into the town to, to save money that, that way? Does that make...
So, through the mayor to, to council, I expect to have a report back on HB Studios. We still have more questions to learn on that. At this point, all we're dealing with is they've asked for $30,000, so I've identified that in, in early days as the ask, how they manage themselves. I think there's, there's, there's work to discuss, and, you know, it's an important regional recreation facility, and it's in all of our interest to make sure it's as sustainable as possible for the community.
But I think, to your point, Councilor Graves, I think some of those questions we do need to find answers to. Otherwise, six months from now, there's going to be another $30,000 ask.
Yeah.
And that's not good for them, and it's not good for us, and it's not good for our partners, so...
Yeah, I agree.
I hope, I hope we can find a long-term solution like that. Any other questions? Hearing none, the motion is on the floor. Ready for the question?
Questions?
All those in favor? Those opposed? You opposed?
Yes.
Yep, okay, motion is carried. And look at that, 7:00, and we are at the end of our agenda. We do have an in-camera meeting next door, our contract negotiations, so we will meet there. If there's no further business, motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Tanner? Councilor Graves, we are adjourned. Thank you.